That's all seven, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open this informational session that we've agreed to have with Title Network and for the night. We've requested Title Network and they've agreed to come speak to us. With that, I'd like to talk a little about the order of business, which I intend to follow tonight. The order of business will begin with an opportunity for any members, anybody who wants to talk about issues related to tower, Title Networks, et cetera, to make up to a five-minute presentation. I'll ask Member Valentine to keep the 30-second rule on it. And with that, then second, I'm going, after that, I will ask Mr. Cropley to take and to make presentation to address those questions and see anything else he wants to present. The third item then I will go to is that I'm going to turn back to the Assembly. At that point in time, they may ask any questions they want to Mr. Cropley and have any dialogue we want to have at that point. After that is finished, I will conclude the meeting for this evening. And with that, is there anybody that would like, well, first of all, I want to lay out some ground rules with that. I want to make sure everybody has time to speak. I want to allow an opportunity, five minutes for presentations. I will remind you, Mr. Valentine will, 30 seconds remaining, and we will move on to their next speaker. I ask that all presentations be civil and thoughtful to the issue, and if there are any accusations or blame being placed, I will ask the presenter to refrain. And with that, anybody who wants to make their, come forward, make their first presentation, please state your name, and if you represent an organization, please do so. With that, anybody can make a presentation.
Hi, I'm Tom Kowalski, and I have a question concerning the type of apparatus you plan on using to provide service in Petersburg. If it's Starlink, like what you've indicated before, how does Starlink cover the gap in service if, when you also mentioned that Starlink does not qualify to fill that gap? And I just, I'm a little confused about that. I would like some clarification, please.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forward and talk? Ask questions for Mr. Cropley to answer?
Greg Browning. I heard that some of the conditions of that grant were that it was going to show that there would be a service increase. And I apologize if this has already been discussed at another meeting, but I haven't seen that map that shows the, what coverage is, how the coverage is going to change, or how that's going to benefit the coverage. And I'd like to see that. And I guess also to answer the question whether that was a qualifying term of that grant being awarded.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Mr. Cropley, do you want to respond to?
Yeah, I think it, on some of these more point-blank factual ones, it might be easier to answer those. And maybe then for the more complicated ones or combined ones, take those at the end if that's okay. But I think I could, I could address these two pretty quickly. If that, I know we talked about the format, but.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and do that, address these two questions if you prefer.
Thank you very much. The great questions. I'll say that a lot tonight because I'm really good at saying that by the gentleman there. We are using Starlink backhaul. We are also, we also use a hybrid approach where we use fiber backhaul. And we use 5G to redistribute that backhaul. But I don't think that answers the question that you were asking, which was, how can we, how can the federal government say that Starlink is not considered served while we are using Starlink to serve? We have, and you're going to hear this a lot from me, and I'm going to go as up to the line as much as I can on this. We do have a lot of NDAs in place with some of these companies. We do have a backhaul agreement with Starlink where we do get prioritized data, and we are using specialized equipment and multiple pieces of specialized equipment. Can you all hear me okay? To bring down that backhaul, and that's the technical term that we use in the industry, that feeds our 5G fixed wireless solution. Much like if you have a residential or commercial versus a commercial vehicle, where a commercial truck can haul more than a residential or a civilian or, I don't know what, truck. So that, that is how we are accomplishing that, by using multiple high-performance terminals, bonding them together, and having a special service level agreement with Starlink to provide high-speed broadband that we can then redistribute using 5G, which is more than sufficient for delivering that, up to one gig.
Okay, let me, anything else you want to add to that at this point?
I think I hit that on yachting. The heat map, the gentleman Greg, I don't know if I got your name right. You're looking for a heat map. We do have those, and I do think they are in the packets. I won't make you go dig through those, but we do predictive heat maps on all of these. That, it's a really big part of deciding what locations will or will not work.
Were those, those maps were in a packet? Were?
They should be. I, that's something we, we don't have a problem sharing those. So if you want to grab a card. Now, I think there's some confusion around the 2.5, where we do have to cover a certain percentage. And that is an FCC requirement on the 2.5 spectrum that we are leasing from PIA, where we have to cover 80% of the population. That is an FCC requirement for the spectrum that is not part of the grant. We did layer them nicely together, where we're getting some synergies there. But it's, it's not do or die on that for the grant.
Somebody else then like to come forward to ask some, ask questions to Mr. Cropley or for Mr. Cropley to answer?
Hi, I have a quick question. It keeps saying in places that this is for, that the towers or the infrastructure and the services to be on tribal lands, or for tribal lands, I suppose. And, but I'm confused, since we've always been, Petersburg has been considered landless. So can you clarify that? Because it's been kind of like a little bit confusing here and there with.
Yeah, honestly, that is a confusing question. So I'll try to my best. And so I ask that you help clarify that.
Sure.
As I work through this. The grant, this is about the grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand, you know?
Yeah, so the grant was, is awarded to tribes to build out broadband in tribal land. All of Alaska is considered tribal land. And if you look at like the USDA or the NTIA, for the purposes of the grant, all of Alaska, so for instance, ACP, I don't know if you're familiar with that program. It's a program that offered $75 a month for households within 150% of the poverty level on tribal land, which all of Alaska was considered tribal land. It does not mean that the tribe owns it. It does not mean that it is under trust. It doesn't mean that the land we're buying is anything other than than just property owned by, by the tribe, much like a lot of other pieces. So it's not redefining anything. It's not necessarily a requirement. If, for instance, a very hypothetical, if you were in the lower 48 on a reservation and there was a highway that went through it and they ran fiber optics through those conduits, that's fine. There, it isn't, it isn't, there isn't like a one-for-one.
Okay, yeah, I was just confused about the designation that, you know, Petersburg is landless, but then also there was, there's been language of tribal land. So I was just trying to clarify that.
Unfortunately, it doesn't change anything. It's just, just for the, for the grant. And it's not really even, it's not a condition of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Micah Klein. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Anybody else would like to come forward and ask questions?
Hello. My name is Nicole McMurren. I have a lot of questions about the process overall, but as I'm understanding the mode of the meeting, I'll stick to address. I'm curious in particular about the site that Tribal Network is pursuing on Haugen Drive, and that there are, that there are other towers in the proximity, smaller towers. And I'm curious as to why the current towers, like at Hammer and Weacon and that facility, does not meet the need that you all are pursuing. It was my original understanding that the grant required that you build your own towers. But then at the listening session last week, I asked that question. I was told, no, you can utilize existing towers. And so I'm a little curious about that. And I'm also curious about, given that the development of this commercial investment is based on grant funds, what dollars you will utilize for maintenance and upkeep of these towers? My understanding from the listening session was that would be predominantly from leasing space on the towers to other entities. My wonder for the Borough Assembly is, you know, and I, because I think the idea of us being able to increase it maybe for EMS services or whatnot would be a plus for the community. I don't know if it's been discussed at what cost. So those are some, some questions that I've, that I've got. And, and overall, just from a process standpoint, it's so difficult to have like one-way conversations.
Do you want to address those, Mr. Cropley?
Yes, I do. Thank you. How do I start this, Nicole? Our grant doesn't prohibit us from leasing. We're pretty free to do what we need to do. There are some, as you can imagine, leasing versus owning is for sustainability and for investments and for opportunity. Get on my soapbox a little bit, being able to invest into communities, provide more options for more carriers to go in more places is a net win, certainly for us. The, I guess, I'm looking at my notes here, trying to, trying to get to your, your question here. The upkeep is supported by leasing it. And it is supported, and I don't really want to get into defending my business plan too much, because I think some of that is internal. But I'm happy to, to try to address your questions as best I can. The project as a whole is sustainable. And this is, and every question you ask there really leads to that sustainability. And a lot of towers are older, excuse me, don't have room or are too expensive. And I think that's where our towers come in, to drive the price drop down, sustain the maintenance of them. I mean, they're steel towers. It's not like we have to change the plumbing on them or anything. We are very much committed to providing space to EMS, fire, police. I won't say free, because I hate it when people say that. But I'm not, I'm not going to pay the police to put equipment on there. I'm not going to, you know, pay for their power or to have climbers go up there and put their equipment up there. But we're not interested in charging a profit margin on police EMS. As a matter of fact, in one community, we're putting the public radio equipment on our tower. And so we look very, we're working with the troopers as well to put their equipment on our towers. So it's a big part of the project to do that.
I think there was another part to that question, too.
Can you help us out a little bit, Nicole?
Yeah, because I feel like I really, I think most of the answers that I got were yet, that because the choices that we'd make are in the best interest of Title Network, not necessarily in the interest of the community at large. My particular question was, you know, what about the current towers don't meet the need? And so I heard your preference towards building, but I didn't really hear what doesn't meet the existing need. And then the funds used for maintenance, it's just curious, if we're building with grant dollars, and then it's twice that the subsidy has been mentioned, the rural access subsidy that was then, that was pulled back, I think you may mention before. I'm just curious about how we, you know, we, you keep the, upkeep the, the equipment, those types of things, if your sense is that leasing from these towers is enough money to generate the funds to do that, to continue to upgrade and, and keep, you know, folks, it was mentioned again at the listening session that, you know, out at Rory's, on Rory Road, that, you know, the site would be cleaned up, and then there'd be plantings, and it, you know, it'd all be so much better looking. But, you know, and then downtown, all that stuff, you know, requires money and personnel. And grant dollars don't necessarily last forever, as we know, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's been a big challenge that we have used our business plan to, to deal with. So the towers will pay for themselves through leases and through subscribers and, and that sort of thing. The, there's a lot of reasons we don't use other towers. There isn't enough room. It's too expensive. They're older. They're not where we want them.
Very general. I mean, I was largely.
I guess I don't want to badmouth that tower.
Anybody else? Do you have any more questions, Cool? Anybody else would like to ask Mr. Cropley some questions?
Judy Omer. I'm curious with the energy pull on this. We were facing a surcharge because we had to use diesel already this year. And so with the extra pull of three new towers and a data center possibly coming this way, who covers that cost?
Yes. I think we run like a 200 amp service and we use about half that. It's, it's very low power. And we don't have any plans for a data center.
Well, there's, there's talk in the wind. Another question I'd have more specific to the Rory Road one, where the, the flower farm was, is out there, we don't have city water. We don't have fire hydrants. We don't have fire protection. So what is the plan, should it happen, that that thing catches on fire? I'm not talking about the steel framework. I'm talking about when you get the antennas on, because there's news of that around the country, that that is a danger.
Yeah, I think that's a shared risk that we all have.
What, what, I don't understand your terminology of share.
What do you do if your house catches on fire out there?
That's why I carry the insurance.
Right. I guess I don't understand the question.
Understood. On the Mill Road one, the application to the city was for 150-foot tower. I don't know how tall it is now. It's looking pretty tall. And then in the presentation on the listening session, the information was all about 180-foot tower. And so I'm, that, that's like putting a telephone pole on height on top of what's the 150. And so what, what are you planning to build there?
Yeah, thank, thank you for bringing that up, because that is something I would like to clarify. That was an error on that presentation. It is 150 feet.
And yet the FAA clearance that you put in, the application for that was also 180. So that's where I just, I don't know.
Yes.
Real.
It is 150 feet. We're not planning right now to build it any taller.
Not planning now. What about when you put the antennas on the top?
The antennas will not add any heights to it.
Okay. I have more questions, but I'll hold.
Hi, I'm Lisa Browning. My question is, who's going to control what type of services are going to be going up and leased on that tower? Is that going to be something that the Assembly controls? Or is that something Title's going to control? You know, what, what can we expect that's going to come in there?
I believe that would be up to us. I don't think there's any code right now that prohibits co-location or manages co-location.
I saw some other folks wanting to come and talk here a bit.
I'm Heather O'Neil, representing just myself. And my question is, if you are going to be open to, you know, relocating, rethinking where you're putting things, and removing, even halting the current towers underway. California, a cell tower was removed by Ripon, California Elementary School, for four students and three teachers were diagnosed with different forms of cancer. In California, firefighter unions repeatedly and successfully lobbied state lawmakers to remove fire stations from their list of 5G cell tower fast-track sites. That seems pertinent to us in Petersburg. Residents of La Jolla, California successfully prevented a cell tower from being placed on a bike path near private homes, a senior care facility, a park, a preschool. EHT President Kent Chamberlain spoke at the town hall, presenting the science behind the risks, that close proximity to cell towers can pose human health. And the next day, AT&amp;T withdrew its application for the tower. A couple in Long Beach, California stopped a 5G cell tower in front of their home. And the initial hearing examiner determination concluded the statement that it does appear through reliable, credible evidence that the FCC regulation as to what are safe RF emission standards are outmoded and inadequate to safeguard the, the public by way, and said scientific medical evidence, appellates have shown that the FCC determination as to what are safe and acceptable RF emissions exposure levels are antiquated and do not, and are not based on current scientific evidence, and that the FCC regulations are instead industry-sponsored, outdated, and just plain wrong, causing the public to be exposed to uncertain, unnecessary, excuse me, and harmful radiation. So I'll read that again. I said it wrong. Causing the public to be exposed to unnecessary and harmful radiation. The couple appealed the case until finally in 2023, they won, and they stopped the 5G tower. There's a lot more going on, too. And I guess my question would be, how are you planning to handle that if, if indeed down the line, if, you know, we can make that case that it's, that we as a community don't believe they're safe? These people as communities did not believe they were safe. And I specifically noticed the firefighters not wanting towers near them. And are you willing to relocate, even if it costs you money to maybe put in a little bit more of your own infrastructure, like add a little more electricity where it's not readily available, maybe even putting in a little bit more road where it's not there, to get these towers at least away from sensitive areas? And thank you very much for hearing me out.
I definitely don't want to get into a debate. And I'm happy to answer your questions to me about, we are open to relocating. We are more than happy to build road, and we are more than happy to run power. And I, we have several examples of that.
Anybody else want to ask Mr. Cropley questions?
My name is John Murgis. Chris, you, you called me several months ago. And so thank you for coming here. It's nice to see somebody in person. And when you called me, I really didn't know anything about the tower that will now be a neighbor. We have adjoining property. And your location at the flower farm is surrounded very closely by residential homes. And several of them are less than 100 feet away from the tower. You have, I think your, your company's made a few comments about possibly relocating. And I'm convinced that there are better properties available that may meet your needs. How much time do we have to try to help you find another location? And the feasibility of that, you know, if you could comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
See you two in person, John?
Yep. Yeah.
I, I.
I'm hearing in pairs. I want to move back to my seat.
Okay. Okay, I'll try to get, get into this a little bit. I do love to hear the sound of my own voice. You know, the, the time and the effort and even the money is not something I'm worried about in making that possible. The real challenge that we face in relocating that is finding a location that will provide adequate coverage. And I know it feels like, or looks like, again, some grace, that we just showed up. We have spent years combing over property and creating a plan and finding locations that work to meet our coverage goals. We sent letters to many, many people. We have a team, our site acquisition team, cold calls. We are working with a lot, a whole team of folks to identify locations. And I even tell my team internally, the only one that And I even tell my team internally, the only one that we can't get around is the technical performance of a location. We're not going to build a 600-foot tower. We're not going to build, you know, I'm not even going to get into what we're not going to build. So, so the feasibility of the technical feasibility, when I say technical, I don't mean geotechnical. I don't mean running power. I don't mean building a road. I don't mean getting through the city. I mean, will our equipment, because it is 5G equipment. It doesn't work very far. It is 40 watts per channel. And maybe we're going to put two, two sectors up there. It, on a good day, it'll clear about two and a half miles. Now with our beautiful rainforest gets in the way. With our beautiful geography of the mountains, they get in the way. About the only thing that works for us is our gray skies, the overcast and the ocean. So we have, we have, this comes up. And we have looked at, at many, many locations and we are happy and we're not too proud to admit that we're wrong and to go back and take everybody's opinion or hey, how about here, how about here, how about there? And run it through our modeling to create those heat maps to see if it'll meet our coverage requirements. So we're, we're happy to do that. What happens is we run out of places to put the finger on the map. So it's, I'm committed to doing that.
But how about the, the time? I, I think there are locations available. They are under ownership of the state of Alaska to get conveyance of that property so that it could be somehow sold to you. Takes many months, sometimes a year or so. Is that a feasibility? And then how do you factor in the, you know, the technical things you're telling me are, I understand that. But how do you factor in the impact to the residents that are there? You know, your, your company is pretty strong on best management practices, very strong on ethics. Somehow I feel that the, the individual landowner is being overlooked in favor of your, your sole interests.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't want to get into debates and change and try to change anybody's mind about the goals of the project or the impact that it has on a community. When we started looking at land, we did start looking at Mental Health Trust, State of Alaska, Tongas. And it's pretty formidable. I don't believe those would fall into our timeline. I mean, out north of a year, I don't think is, is tenable.
The community, I think in general, wants to cooperate with you. We, we want to help you achieve, achieve your goals. So keep that in mind and, and we want to work as, with you as a partner. But I don't feel that you are willing to work with us.
I'm sorry that you feel that way. I.
Micah Klein, I have a question for, to kind of tag off Mr. Murgas's question. With timeline to looking at, into other sites possibly, I actually spoke with Deonar last week with both the leases department and the conveyances department. And the gentleman, Andrew, that is the manager of conveyances, indeed confirmed that a conveyance could take a very long period of time, more than a year. However, he said, for this exact purpose in the interim, there is permitting and leases that could meet the needs because he seemed familiar with the fact that in these infrastructure, this infrastructure-type projects, that there would be timelines because of grants and and other factors. So he seemed very willing to help and that there were ways to get construction going, even if the conveyance wasn't completed. He said that what, how it was explained to me was it would be like a charitable conveyance to the borough and then the borough would trade the, trade or the land or sell it. I'm not sure how that would work, but like in, for instance, like with Papke's, if you wanted to trade the Rory Road site for land that the borough was able to get a conveyance from the state of Alaska for. And he seemed very, that there, that was a, that was very possible and eager to answer questions and look into that. And so I, I, I think since you expressed that you have time and willingness, it would be really good to have a true work session where people could come together and pour over a map and work together so that everybody's interests can be met and complement each other. And I think that would really rebuild some relations.
Yeah, 100% not saying no to that. So yeah, I'd love to see.
I just wanted to share that information and just, and you said that there was some time and, you know, there is, there's ways to fill those time gaps between conveyance and.
I'd love to look, I'd love to look at that. Again, finding that place would, is to me, the first step.
Yep, that's what's, yeah. So I would like to get together and work with you on that. And that would be, and I think there's lots of people in this room that would volunteer to help and look into logistics.
Any other questions?
Greg Browning. As I was sitting there thinking about the, you're, you're talking about a heat map. I had some questions about that. Does that compare the coverage that you're going to provide with that tower or these towers with what is currently being covered? Because I, we, we have good coverage there. I was just curious if your maps compare current coverage with what you're, with what you're going to cover?
Good question, Greg. We don't have heat maps for the other companies. What we do have is our drive mapping from when we've driven the roads with our gizmos to measure signal strength. That definitely depends on a lot of different things, right? And the heat maps we use are theoretical until they're not, right? The, I'm, we are not worried about other carriers' coverage, right? We don't necessarily concern ourselves if another carrier has great coverage or poor coverage. We're more concerned with the lack, either the complete lack of coverage for our service when we look at our coverage maps. Does that make sense or are you?
I guess my question is, if we're, if we're using taxpayer dollars to increase coverage for an area, we should be looking at an area that doesn't have coverage.
Yes.
So that's.
I totally agree.
And the, the coverage, if, if you're looking to, so you're saying you did not look at other people's coverage when you decided?
No, I'm not. No, I think we have a, a disconnect here.
Okay.
And I, once again, it was pretty nuanced. And I'm happy to, to have this discussion with you, Greg. To me, I look at this in several different ways, right? One, when I'm building a tower with multiple, with room for multiple carriers, I want to provide, I want to pick a place that another carrier would be interested in providing their service. Their service is very different than our service. Our service is a fixed wireless access to the home wireless service. Their service is a cellphone. Cell coverage is not fixed wireless access coverage. For, there's been a lot of focus on the particulars of the grant, which I'm fine getting into. But I don't think we're going to see a situation, an aha moment of, well, my phone works here, or my phone doesn't, or the fixed wireless works here. That's not how it works. As a matter of fact, we get into all kinds of things about latency, upload, download, and then the different technologies like the gentleman earlier was talking about Starlink. So just because, and I think this is the question you're asking, and you can pin me down all you want. Just because you have Starlink access, just because your GCI phone works, not, not only for the telecommunications act, that doesn't qualify it as significant or insignificant gap in coverage, just because, and, 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 you know, let's draw this out. I'm talking more than I should, but I do. Imagine a community that only had one provider and another provider couldn't come in. And so it's, and I, I mean this in, with the deepest respect and I, and it just, I only have so many words. It's irrelevant of what another provider is providing when it comes to cellular service and what we're doing for the grant. And I think that's what you're asking because you brought up taxpayer money. I'll also say a lot of, all of our telecommunications is subsidized by taxpayer dollars.
So will you be providing cellphone coverage with this tower or just internet?
Again, nuanced, I'm not trying to weasel. We are building the tower to support cellular infrastructure, room for cellular providers. Title network, the service that we provide is not, and cellular is even the wrong word, but I'm really not going to go down that road. We are not providing mobile service yet. We are providing what, like if we were opening a strip mall, which is probably a pretty unflattering parallel, we're putting a subway in. That doesn't mean a Wendy's isn't going to be there if you're tracking me. And I, I don't want a lot of communities and a lot of folks hyper-focus on our service. To me, the real value that we're bringing to the community is the infrastructure, is that tower that does have room for four carriers on it, including ourselves. It does have room for police and fire and all that other sort of thing. I, yeah, so I think I'm meandering a little bit here. Feel free to fire back.
So the, the primary service you're going to provide will be internet service, cellular internet service, is that correct then?
The primary service we are providing is the tower. Is room for cellular providers.
So you're not going to have a per month fee for any type of service off of that tower then?
We will be selling a fixed wireless access service as well.
And that will be for cell or just for internet?
That will just be for internet.
How does that compare with Starlink that we have access to now?
Well, it's cheaper.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to ask Mr. Crowley questions? Nicole?
Thank you. Nicole McMurray, again, just following up on Greg's thought there and circling back. Two and a half miles? That is, that's the distance with which your, the, the service that Title will be providing? Is that, was that an accurate understanding?
That is, that is correct. And that's, you know, my engineers get mad at me when I say that because it depends.
Okay. Seems like a whole lot of rigmarole and really significant infrastructure to go through for extending two and a half miles in a given direction, noting again that what we are in fact, should we continue down this path, is actually providing opportunity for other commercial development beyond this. And what's, you know, a point that's curious to me, again, and I asked in the listening session if, you know, if, you know, was one set, was one, is the whole plan dependent on success by having all of the three towers? And it's curious to me how even the, the borough views the, the current zoning on the Haugen Street site is open space, a public use, which allows for government buildings and uses of state, federal, borough, municipal, or other government or quasi-government subdivisions subject to height restrictions, as in commercial one zoning, which is that of 35 feet. I don't know how we squish 120-foot tower with a 10-foot antenna into 35 feet. And so I, and I, and this seems to me as if we are pursuing a commercial business, not a governmental building, municipal facility, or other quasi-governmental subdivision use. So I feel like we're far off the mark and just gauging from what the community is pushing back against. I'm, I'm really curious as to why, as a borough, what's really, what's pushing us to accommodate such significant infrastructure within our community when folks aren't identifying the need for it or saying, yes, you truly are answering this need. You're really addressing this issue. I feel like my community is being bullied, is how I feel in my heart of hearts. I feel like there's a community out at Papke's who is expressing their concerns about being negatively impacted and those concerns are being ignored. I feel like the borough is seeking other opportunity for this entity to come in out of the goodness of their hearts, but I don't necessarily understand what the impetus of that is. I see problems with the process, you know, as, as a, as an adjacent landowner, I was given notice in, in August of last year that there would be a meeting that the, that regarding a purchase. Nowhere in the information that I was provided did it say, because the plan is to build 120-foot tall tower. That is information that was revealed after if I were to, aside from the own volunteer work that I do, if I were to do a deep dive into the public and into the planning and zoning pre-work packet or the notes for the borough. The public process for this, you know, when the full scheme of plans would be made known to the community at large seems to really fall short. And I think that that's where you're seeing so much pushback, the, the trust factor for us to be doing so much work. And Assemblyman Stanton Greger noted today, the amount of time that has been put into accommodating title networks for commercial interest, it's, it, I, I'm struggling with understanding that.
Thank you.
I'm Heather O'Neil, just speaking for myself. But I did want to say that as a commissioner on the planning and zoning, out at Papke's, it was private owned land. And so it never came before us. So we weren't, you know, and of course, we're all, we've all learned late in the game that even had it, we are behind in our ordinances and our code. And we were not prepared for such unforeseen infrastructure because. unforeseen infrastructure, because it was written before we all had cellphones and all of that. But we didn't get to see anything of it, just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was wondering if you might allow us to start mixing our questions and comments in with the group, or do you want us to wait till the end?
I was hoping to allow everybody to ask their questions, and we can reemphasize her. Dig deeper if we can. Okay, would anybody else like to make presentations?
Lisa Browning, I'm afraid this might sound a little redundant, but circling back to who can purchase, who can lease service on your tower? If we, safety stuff's already been brought up, health issues have been brought up already. My question would be, is, right now, it sounds kind of innocuous. Okay, we got a little cell service, maybe some home internet, but what's to prevent you from selling service to somebody that might be more hazardous? Or more involved, or, you know, I don't even know the right words. But that's kind of my question, is like, if there's no controls on who you lease to, what's, what, what are we going to end up with at some point?
Okay, I, yeah, I, I appreciate the clarification on that. Because I, I didn't feel like we, we really ran that one to ground. There is a great deal of regulation involved on the equipment that goes on towers. And there's, that's a huge requirement on, on leasing that, so. It's not the wild wild, it's not like they're going to put experimental gizmos up there. It will all be regulated through the FCC.
Hi, my name is Kari Peterson, and I'm not trying to be contrary, but I know a lot of people in this room are really invested in, in how they feel about this. And I too have property that I am developing out in that area, and I, I really disagree with how our community has jumped onto Title Network about this, and that, the claim that Title Network is taking up a bunch of borough time. I feel like Title Network, I was really excited about the grant. As a librarian, that's my, I'm not here as a librarian, I'm here as myself, but as my job, I was super excited, because this is so much bigger than Title Network, and it's going all over the state, and it is reaching rural communities that do not have wireless. And in Southeast Alaska, down in Craig, they don't have internet access in their library. So I was so excited when this went through, when this, this whole grant that allowed this to go through. And I view Title Network, and maybe I'm wrong, I, it's my understanding that they're owned by Klinkit and Haida, but I also view Title Network as a private business owned by Klinkit and Haida. And I feel like we put a tower in, we allowed somebody to put a tower in next, right in, right in a subdivision next to Hammer and Wecon, and nobody piled on about that, and and I feel like we're, as a community, I feel bad that we're, I feel attacking a company, and I really feel like it is needed, and, and it was brought up at the very first meeting, that we need rezoning laws, we need our zoning laws to catch up with where our society is today. And instead, all of that energy, I feel like, is really being directed at Title, which is kind of unfair, because if, if we're going to push back against these towers, why did we not push back against the one standing next to the grocery store in the elderly housing, and the, right in the middle of everywhere, and and just listening to people talk too, I know that they may not be in the room, but there's a lot of businesses down there. And I can't even say that I agree with the businesses, but there's a lot of business and people down there too, who are going to want internet. And if I owned a business down there, I sure would be glad that Title's coming into that area. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't even go so far as to say that nobody in that area wants the service, because I, I could think of a lot of people down there who probably do, whether or not I agree with it. And so I guess my question, and sorry, I did have a question in this, is I keep hearing you say that, sorry, I shake when I talk publicly. I keep hearing you say that you're, you are willing to extend a timeline or look at different things, but I also feel like you, as a company, has come into our community, purchased land that is zoned for the purpose of what you intended. And I really don't feel like that was hidden, and so, I mean, realistically, how far out can, I mean, because you can't sit on it indefinitely, it costs too much money to do that as a company, and you can't do that. And so I feel like, as a community, asking you, as a company, to prolong something, or put it off, or try to buy other property. So how long, I mean, I heard you say like a year, but is that even realistic? And do, and my other one would be, do you feel like the borough has worked with you and, and has the zoning where it needs to be? Or is in the direction of, of having that zoning where it needs to be, if you're looking at different property?
Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm willing to make every effort possible on timeline and to, to make that work, without getting into too many hard details on that, because that's always a, a moving target. But if we could find something that worked, and I could pull it off, I'm, I'm going to say no to that. The, the zoning, I would, and I have the luxury to do that, by the way. You know, that's not something that everybody has the luxury to do. So as, as much as I have the luxury to be flexible, I will be. I'm not looking to, to operate in bad faith, or just to move on and, and in that manner. I am part of the community, you know, I grew up in Sitka. I won't tell you what my favorite, my second favorite community is, but it rhymes with Petersburg, so. The zoning, I mean, honestly, it's easier to go to communities that have rules and zoning, because then we know it avoids a lot of this. And I would, you know, I, I mean, I would, I would, I'm sure I won't be asked to, but I would love to, to help in that process. Not this guy.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Will Ware. I am a local born and raised here in Petersburg. I have to just be upfront and let everybody know that I was the one who hired Chris at Klinkit and Haida. I was the chief development officer for Klinkit and Haida, which is the regional tribe for this region. And I got to tell you, I'm, I'm somewhat appalled a little bit, to be quite frank, as a local community member, because this is intended, and when we applied for these grants through the NTIA, Chris, what is the acronym for?
Oh, don't do that to me. National Telecommunications Administration.
Yes, and so when we applied for this multimillion-dollar grant, we received this grant prior to when Starlink was getting very popular. Starlink, if you know, is something that had come up relatively quickly. We applied for this grant for this region for the sole purpose of making sure that we were going to be addressing three areas of need within our region. We needed economic development in our communities that, that are sorely in need and poorly given service of internet. The second was for telehealth. Especially during the pandemic, healthcare was not available to many of our small villages and communities around Southeast Alaska. So we did that with the intent of addressing telehealth. Mental health was a huge advocate, or thing that we seen as a benefit when we started going in and providing internet services to some of the small communities. Number three is education. Those are the three topics that we were really focusing on when I was at Klinkit and Haida, and I know they're still focusing on that now. What are these towers intended to do? They're utility towers. Now, if I don't remember, a year before last, if any of you remember the vessel that went down and, and got hit, a Hughes craft down the Narrows? I was there. I called the Coast Guard, because I watched that boat get hit. I watched that boat go down. A good partner of mine, I'm not going to name his name, went over and got the gentleman, because I couldn't get my boat into the tight enough spot to grab the gentleman out of the water. But as he was hanging on to that boat, I'm yelling at him to get away from it, so that I can get him away from a sinking boat. He screamed, "My wife's on the boat." I said, "Let go, and I'm going to get to your boat." He let go, the other boat pulled him into their boat, they got him to safety. I got from me to you, Scott, and that boat went down. All the while, we're calling Mayday, 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 Mayday to the Coast Guard. You know what the response was? Any guesses? None. No response. Why? Because it's a dead zone. I've heard people have made comments that, well, you know what, with the Coast Guard, you know, they, I talked to the Coast Guard, and they said they didn't, you know, they don't have any talks with, with putting towers, or, or, or putting repeaters on any towers that could go up in that area. I'm here to tell you that our public safety department in Juneau works exceptionally close with the US Coast Guard. And they're in great need of tower spaces that they could put, utility poles, just like we're describing, so that it can address the issue of dead zones, like we have in Wrangell Narrows. This is also a utility tower that we know that our local law enforcement and public safety departments, right here on this island, could take benefit from. And you know, I've heard everything from, we feel the community's being bullied. How are we being bullied when, when Klinkit and Haida has come to this community? Well, more than once. When we have employees that live here. When Klinkit and Haida is saying, we're going to put in to the infrastructure of this community hundreds, if not millions of dollars, that isn't going to cost you anything. Not one person that I ever hear, when we put a tower up there by the school district, by, behind Parks and Rec, nobody complained about that. We didn't hear anything going on about that. When the one went up by the fire department, nobody complains about that. But when a local and, and the regional tribe says, we're going to put some infrastructure in this community, now we got screaming and hollering. I'm sorry, but a simple thank you would have sufficed. Is it going to meet the needs immediately? I, I'm talking, man, just let me talk for a moment, thanks. I'm sorry if I'm being rude, but I'm a little appalled by this. You know, and I understand there's frustration, people don't want to see a tower in their front yard or backyard. I didn't want to see one either. But the fact remains, is that the technology is going so fast, that the utility towers that are being built has every opportunity, every opportunity to advance with that technology to better serve our town. And I'm going to say this, it's going to offend a few people, but again, it, there's getting to be a reoccurring theme here. When our tribes are contributing to the community's infrastructure, there seems to be some resistance that I don't see with anybody else. Here's your 30 seconds.
Anybody else have questions from Mr. Cropley?
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I don't have a story. I just looked out my window one day and saw these trucks building a tower. I got no notice. I had no idea this was happening, never thought it would happen. We have AT&amp;T, GCI, APNT, Starlink, we're covered. We have all kinds of service. But there are communities out there that don't have any service. My question is, why didn't you start in the communities that need this service? Why did you come to Petersburg when we are covered? There are places you can put your tower, that those people in the boats could still have cellphone coverage, which is not part of your grant, by the way. But if it becomes part of your tower, why not pick a better site? It doesn't impede our quality of life. Mill Road is a place where many residents walk their dogs, take their kids to play. We look over that view shed, and that's why we live here. It's a very difficult place to live. It's hard in the wintertime. The love comes from the beauty that we see when we look out our window. The time we spend with our kids. Yes, there's towers that have been put up. Those things were built long before we realized how unhealthy they are. You won't talk about the health aspects, because the FCC says you don't have to. That's going to change. The FCC is going to have to update their health mandates. They were sued. Two years ago, they still haven't done anything. But they will. We may have to move towers. I hope we have to move towers. We'll find places for them. Towers, we're not going to need them anymore. Now you can get cellphones that have satellite capabilities. So my question is, why did you not start in places where they need it? And start it in a place where we don't need it, we don't want it? If I come to you and tell you that I talked to every single resident in my neighborhood, not a single person wants that tower on Mill Road, will you remove it? No, you won't. Don't tell me. But that's what we're facing. That's where the frustration is coming from. There is a place for that Mill, Mill Road Tower that would be less intrusive, that would not cut into the quality of life of our neighbors and friends and families. Please consider that. Try to make this a better situation. But why? Why did you not start in those communities that really need this service?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I request a short break?
You, you can, maybe you may. Yeah, let's take a 10-minute, or a five-minute break.
Five minutes.
We'll move on, yeah, five minutes be good. Let's continue on with folks asking questions at about 7:30. I think I'm going to turn and then ask the assembly, allow the assembly time to ask all the questions they want to also ask. With that, does anybody else would like to come forward and ask Mr. Cropley questions?
You know, this is more of a statement rather than a comment, and it's just a little bit of context here given. My name's Brandon Ware, I'm representing myself right now. And just to answer the comment earlier of like, why this community, and I think it's pretty clear, I know that in my dealings with Title Network, and given that I'm in PIA, and I've known we were, were the ones that went into contract and leased over our 2.5 gigahertz rights to Title Network to come in here. I know for a fact that part, part of the allure of leasing this out, leasing out our 2.5 gigahertz rights as granted to us by the federal government, was that we saw the work that Title was doing in other communities. We saw the work that they brought to Pelican, that they brought to all these tiny little communities that were without access, and so that's a little bit of a, a little bit of a falsity to believe that they're starting in Petersburg when they did bring internet to these communities that were vastly underserved. And so now they're, they're here in Petersburg, given that we have leased these 2.5 gigahertz to them, and which is, which is granted to us by our tribal sovereignty, that, as granted to us, and, and as given to us by, by the federal government, and so this is really a, I want to thank Title Network for being here, to, to continue protecting this and ensuring tribal sovereignty through and through, that this is something to us that's going to provide tons of opportunity for, for our tribal citizens and for health and safety of our community, so, thank you. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to ask Mr. Crowley questions?
My name is John Lichtenberger, I live up there in the airport subdivision by the big cell tower up there. I gave my pedigree to you guys last week. I'm a little bit concerned that there's a movement that may want to move the goalposts, so to speak, as far as what they can build or can't build, and I don't think that that's very fair. Whatever they applied for and received permitting for, to move the goalposts at that point is is not right. The other thing is, is I was on code enforcement in Queen Creek, Arizona, and we had some of the same kind of issues that would come up there, not in my backyard type of issues. My idea of government is to facilitate the needs of the community and the infrastructure is one of those needs. So I always looked for, when I was doing my enforcement, a way to say yes. Not a way to restrict or put roadblocks in front of my, the people that I worked for. So I would encourage the Planning Commission and the Assembly to look for ways to say yes to a project that seems to have a lot of validity. I call, I had a call from Five Mile the other day from a woman asking for some help. And we got disconnected because she was calling on the internet because she didn't have cell coverage that was dependable at Five Mile. So if there's any way that cell coverage can be more dependable, not only for lifesaving issues, but for just day-to-day issues, I think we should, as a community, embrace that. If we can find common ground and move things that make people happy, everybody happy. I don't think that's really possible usually in my experience with government, you can't make everybody happy. But you can look for some things that maybe you can give on or not. But again, I would encourage the Assembly and the Planning Commission to look for ways to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and ask some questions?
My name is Kirsten Dupree. I was also born and raised in Petersburg, grew up here, my children were born and raised here and grew up here. There's a cell tower, or a tower, whether it's cell or not, that now is very close to my son and his grandchildren. And the health concerns from that. We learn, we have learned about oil in the water, we have learned about cancers caused by all kinds of different things. Will you guys address that if things like that happen, or the property taxes? If if they can't sell their property for what it's worth by the city's amount? Will tribal step in and say, "Hey, you know, we we brought this to you, we're going to fix it." If there's health issues, are you going to take care of that? Are you going to say, "Yeah, we screwed up. We're going to take care of it." I mean, you've got people with cancer, you've got people with other illnesses, are you going to deal with that? As far as other communities, I hope that the smaller communities within Southeast were addressed before us. Prince Wales has a large number of communities that have been wanting cell service or internet service. I hope that they have been taken care of. This is in the application sent in by Will Ware. The Klinken and Haida bid proposal provides qualifying broadband service to 100% of unserved households in its services areas within its tribal lands. That is all of Southeast Alaska. Klinken and Haida will offer those services in other service areas unless there is either an objection or a duplication. They determine that there will be thirty-two towers on and on. Anyway, objection and duplication is, to me, the important thing. As far as cell service elsewhere, out on the water, that would be wonderful. We finally had to get Starlink because we couldn't get in touch with anybody when we had an engine breakdown in Chatham Straits. We need that in other areas, we don't need it right here, we're covered. But yeah, if we had cell service out in Frederick Sound and dead areas, that would be wonderful. But I don't think that's what's being addressed with this. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk to Mr. Crowley or have questions? Park, is there anybody on Zoom that wants to? Okay, thank you. You're seeing or hearing no more, I'm going to turn this back to the Assembly then. So the Assembly now has a chance to ask the questions. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. Mr. Crowley, just want to thank you for coming here. I really appreciate your tone. Forgive me if I read some of these things since I try to get my thoughts organized. But I'm just speaking as one junior member of the Assembly. But we, as an Assembly, need your help to solve some of these problems that are outside of our control. And I'd just like to state here to the Borough Manager and to Title Network that I remain open to supporting the land sale. But that support depends on whether negotiations between Title Network and the Borough produce meaningful solutions to the concerns consistently raised by Borough residents. Without that, I will not be able to support the land sale. And I thank you very much for coming here.
Okay, Member Valentine?
Thanks, Bob, thanks, guys. Can you state the places that you are in or in any places that you were in prior to coming to Petersburg as well, the communities and all that?
Yes, I can also, I'll talk about, I'll answer your question first. So I pulled up the one that has everything on there for everywhere that we are planning to be, that we are in. Right now, we are building towers in Thorn Bay. We finished one in Wrangle. We finished one here in Petersburg. We are building three in Sitka with our eyes on a couple more there. I have a couple rooftops in Sitka. I have Heidenberg. Very excited about that one. Cluckwan, Clawock, and Thorn Bay, where I'm actively building towers right now. I have sites, multiple sites in Wrangle. We are in the acquisition phase in Craig, Kaufman. We're partnering in Gus Davis. We've provided, we've partnered in Huna. We've provided service in Pelican. We're looking very hard at Angoon right now. Port Alexander. I think I mentioned Cake already, I'm going to mention them again. I've got a meeting tomorrow night with them. Edna Bay, Knockety Bay, Cassan, excited about that one too. We are negotiating in Cassan for land, we're negotiating in Cake for land. Hollis, I already mentioned Craig, already mentioned Heidenberg. Those are our current in-progress locations that we're working on.
So, to be clear, and I'm going to do my best to go through this list, I try to write it down at the same time.
So I keep it in Excel.
Actively building. Also, I'm going to bunch together what has already been built. So Thorn Bay has been built and or actively in on the way. Wrangle, Petersburg, Sitka, Heidenberg, Cluckwan and Clawock, those are the ones that are actively going up currently. Or
I'd like to roll back Cluckwan, please.
Cluckwan, okay. And then the rest of them, Craig, Kaufman, Gus Davis, Huna, Pelican, so on. Pelican is, you said, already done or no?
Right, we did a Starlink-only solution there.
Star, okay, but they they are served. Okay.
Wow.
Kind, well, okay.
Lot of nuance.
Right. And then you saying that you, you say partnership, that means you are talking with the community members?
I actively have, we're using the two-five and defending two-five in Huna. And we are funding and NDAs here a little bit. I'm online in, I am not online in Huna, Huna is online because of funding we provided to a partner. And that goes for Gus Davis, we are working to turn those on imminently.
Okay, thank you. And then, what was I going to say? Give me a second, sorry. In this timeframe, it's, you know, and people had asked that all night tonight. Seems like it's within a year, just because it just seems like that. But that also means within a year for the rest of the communities as well? Ish?
The ones we listed there, yes. There are some outside of that that are outside of that year that aren't on that list that we are working to get site acquisition, to get sites where we've been.
Uh, that's it for right now, thank you.
I would like to address the first gentleman, sorry, I didn't bring my glasses. Scott?
Oh, Bob.
You know, say, Bob Martin, my eyes aren't that bad. You mentioned you'd only be open to the land sale if we had meaningful solutions. Is that something that you could quantify?
Not really. But I would like to work on that, but I don't know if it would be appropriate to discuss the negotiations like in this setting. But but I would be open to working toward that. And maybe when I'm a little more equipped and have more consensus from the Assembly.
Member Newman?
Okay, thank you, Scott Newman. Um, I feel compelled to make a comment to the audience because it keeps coming up. You know, like, how can the Assembly allow this to happen? And this has come up enough times that I'm a little bit having a hard time with it. Because we are not allowing anything by virtue of giving Title Network the authority to do anything. The reason why Title Network is able to come here is because we have no ordinance. And we have towers, one right next to Hammer and Weacon, one right next to the high school that have been there for twenty-five to twenty-seven years. And so it's, don't blame us because this is all coming down on us. We're trying to navigate this as best as possible. And in that, in that regard, we are trying to forge a path forward so that we will have more more control or ability to channel these telecommunications companies in the way that we want. Okay, so now I can address you, thank you. I appreciate your opening comments about being willing to work with the with the residents and community, whether it's, you know, you said there was no regard for, you know, time, finances, location. And so I take that to mean that you're willing to work with the community and the, and if necessary, the administration, Borough Administration or Assembly, to find solutions that will, you know, appease the community's concerns. And am I correct in that, in your comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to qualify that. I I am willing, Title Network is willing to do whatever we can to facilitate that. Now, I am going to run out of time, I am going to run out of money, and I am going to run out of options.
Yeah.
And I'll say it again. It is my belief, my professional opinion, the real problem is going to be to find a location that works. That's the only thing I can't control.
Right, so within the scope of the requirements that you have to be able to provide the service that you're trying to. I mean, we, I understand that, we understand that. And I think that that's something that we can, you know, move forward with, at least within the understanding that you're at least willing to consider other locations for, you know, maybe, maybe potentially all three sites. My perspective is, you know, we have three different locations and all three locations have unique considerations even of themselves. One is outside our service area, so even if we do pass an ordinance, it would never apply to that unless unless there were dramatic changes to the service areas and zoning. The one at the Fire Hall, I'm going to, I, I, you know, we agreed to sell you that land. You guys were in negotiations with the manager. The, you know, it did happen during the summer. There were a lot of people were busy. But I do remember, I think at two of those meetings, Title Networks, you guys zoomed in. Actually, I think you sent somebody down to explain what you were going to do. So some people say that, "Well, I look back on the minutes, they couldn't determine that." But I specifically remember that Title Networks, like, you guys zoomed in and you had somebody here to explain exactly what was going to happen. So this really shouldn't be as much of a surprise to anybody. And I'm going to switch gears again. And I'm a commercial pilot, I'm an air taxi business here. And and I'm going to speak specifically to the Mill Road location. As we're having these discussions, I didn't realize it was already up. So I drove out there and I looked up at it and went, "Oh, my gosh, this thing sticks way up there." So I was able to, I had to fly last week, so I was by myself and I hopped in the plane and I flew past it. And I was honestly pretty surprised at how far it sticks up. So if it's a hundred and fifty-foot tower, I must, do you know the ground, you know?
AGL, I don't.
No, what's the MSL of the base?
Yeah, you got me.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's, you know, the airport's a hundred and ten feet. So I'm assuming it's probably in the eighty to a hundred feet. So it's two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty feet high at the top of it. So I tried to do some checking with the FAA and nobody that I was able to contact with the FAA seems to have any knowledge of this whatsoever. With the close proximity of that tower, and I could only envision myself coming on and off the runway and transitioning to Scal Bay. I mean, I have really deep concerns about somebody driving into that thing at some point.
My turn, all right. My dad's a pilot. He got his pilot license when he was sixty, we're really proud of him. He flies a plane older than me. So I, I have a special place in my heart for pilots. The, I do have the FAA paperwork here in front of me, we did send it into to somebody here, I believe. The that, you asked for the NAVD, is that right? NAVD, what do you want? Or the AGL, AGL's one fifty-eight?
Yeah, MSL is AGL is above ground level, so.
All right. So we did get FAA paperwork, they did determine that we don't need to put lights on it. I'm happy to put lights on it.
Okay. I think even with lights, you know, we get, you're born and raised Southeast Alaska, you've got to understand, you know, we get a lot of, lot of rain, a lot of low ceilings, a lot of short visibilities. And I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, somebody that's not familiar with this area will be coming in down low, trying to find the runway and flies into a gray tower that blends in with everything else. So I don't know. I mean, did that come into the planning or consideration for that location or was it?
A hundred, a hundred percent. Again, we work with the FAA to get.
I'm really surprised that the FAA would put their stamp on it because they sure didn't ask any of the local pilots.
I know, it doesn't help. What, what could I do to? If putting lights on it isn't a good solution for you, what could we do?
Number one would would be a different location. If that, if there was no alternate location that was suitable, then I would say, you know, there's places that other, other, other visibility mitigation strategies that would enhance the visibility of the tower. More so than a light would. A light, I mean. A light, I mean, if it was a light, would it be like one light at the top of the tower or how does?
God, whatever you want, brother. Like, I'll, I'll light that thing up like a Christmas tree. Uh, I, I don't know how happy that would make the neighbors, but, um, yeah, you want a blinking light on there? You want a big red one? You want, I mean, um, you want us to light up the fence or?
I, I think the best thing would be, would be to move it if there was a
Well, I, I feel you there, but
Yeah, just to get rid of, just to move the thing not in a direct path to the runway. But beyond that, I mean, then, then you just gotta, you gotta make that thing visible. Because it's a very, it's a very real possibility that someone's gonna eventually drive into that thing.
Thank you. Other question from the assembly?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming to town. I appreciate your time. So how many towers total is Tower Network planning to put on Midcop Island?
Oh boy, geography, is it just Petersburg on this island?
Yep.
Yeah. Right now, our plan is three.
Okay.
Including the one we have up, just so I'm not.
And so that includes the one, can I just continue on or you want me to stop? So the one at Papke's, uh, when is that construction supposed to start?
Sounds like I'm gonna wait a little bit on that. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I can, I can look at our old plans here, but
I was just curious, rough date, just like in the spring, summer? What are you thinking?
Really depends on environmental, FAA and, um, uh, environmental.
Okay. So you mentioned two point five distance. So does that, is that, let's say you put a tower up at Papke's and you have a two point five distance from that, how does it match up with the one that's up at the Mill Road? I mean, for coverage?
Doesn't.
Okay. Great. So when you put a tower up, are you in the, are you in the business of putting towers up or communication equipment up?
Well, that's something I ask myself every day. Uh, when we started, it was putting communication equipment up and then we realized the utility and the power of the tower. No pun intended, or, um, in that, that was the real bridge for the digital divide was, um, creating a location uh, for the communication equipment, because when we did go to these communities, there wasn't anywhere to put these things, or it was on an older tower or a very expensive tower or both. Um, so, um, I think like any business plan or, uh, adventure, it, uh, matures and organically grows into, uh, a solution, um, that, that fits the problem.
But still fits the grant application?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And the grant application, we put in there that we were gonna build towers. We just didn't realize in the beginning how important and vital those towers were to everything else. As opposed to just providing internet, which is, is transformational.
So when you have the towers up, you will be actively advertising to lease spaces on your towers?
Absolutely.
Okay, as part of your business plan?
Yes, sir.
The word was mentioned once or twice about, and I don't understand what this means. I mean, I can look at it, but what, what is meant by all of Alaska is tribal land? Can you explain that to me?
Yes, and I'm really gonna try not to sound like, give me some grace in the answer. Each federal program is dictated by law. In this case, the, um, TBCP by NTIA, which was done by the, the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And these federal agencies would create a program like TBCP or ACP. The ACP one's a little bit better, easier to explain. That can stand in, or do you want to be specific on TBCP?
Just answer, I'm just looking for an answer that I could understand.
I, I feel you, man. It's, it's a nuanced and complicated answer because what I don't want to do is sit here and tell you that you, um, is, uh, I want to respect your sovereignty, right? I want to respect your position. The federal government said, painted all of Alaska with a brush and said for the, means for the, for the, for the means of this grant, all of it is considered tribal land and that the law is written that on tribal land, we will award tribes X dollars or we will allow the program to provide more money, i.e. TB, uh, ACP. So in the lower forty-eight, where we, there's reservations, it's a lot easier to say where tribal land starts and ends. But being that, given, um, without a history lesson, the way that, that Alaska works with tribes and that it is integrated and that a community like Petersburg, you have tribal and non-tribal citizens living door to door. So instead of saying, well, Will, you get ACP at seventy-five dollars a month, but, Scott, you don't. They just painted all of Alaska as tribal land so that Scott and Will could both receive the same benefits.
Thank you. Will the cell tower, if we don't come into any kind of negotiations about possible land trades or whatever, will the cell tower at Papke's increase communication access outside of service area one? We've heard concerns that we were hoping that the cell coverage would be better out the road. Is there, is that gonna meet that need or that's not part of this process?
That tower will provide better access for about two and a half miles around it from, from that location.
And a question about the tower up at Mill Road. We've talked about the height of that tower and you mentioned that was a hundred and fifty foot, or is that what it was? So is that include the hardware that goes on top? Or is that? So the piece that's up there now, that is in a hundred and fifty feet, but you're, by the time you put that tower package?
Nope, nope.
Know what?
That's not how it works.
Okay.
The, uh, it is at its height. It is getting no higher. There will be no equipment above, above it.
So can you explain what that equipment is up lines road that's on the flatbed that looks like communication hardware? And has Title Network stuff on, written all over it and there's generated?
Those are, oh, yeah, yeah. Those are our cell on wheels. Those are portable towers.
So they're just, they can go up anywhere?
Yeah, I just keep them here. Cause I got a truck and a guy here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. There was a question that was asked. I'm just curious as well. Is, is there, is your success title success based off three towers of Petersburg? No, okay. And then with them not necessarily needing to like touch each other per se, you know, you have one going, trying to go into town, one trying to go in the, one in the Mill Road and one trying to go out there. If I were to do a map in my head, that's just basically trying to hit as much of the population, eighty percent, right? Okay, so is, is it two and a half miles as the crow flies from the fire hall to the Mill Road?
I don't, I don't know how far apart.
It's not, okay. So assuming that the two and a half miles is kind of the groundwork. You said it, everyone's gonna live and die by this thing, right?
It just stops.
Yeah, yeah, right. If, if that is the case and we stretch it two and a half miles and just like a small overlap, that is still acceptable within your mapping, right? Because we don't have, we haven't seen the map. I don't think anybody in this, in here, maybe except for a, a select few that have seen this map, right? And so I don't know, because we're sitting up here saying land swap, land swap, land swap, right? But we are on the, or at least I'm speaking for me, not any of these guys, speaking for me. I don't know what the map looks like to be able to facilitate maybe a better spot, right? Whether it be private land for you guys to buy, whether it be, um, other borough land, you know, I, I don't know. But giving, given that, that two and a half mile kind of rough area I could put in my head, I can see how maybe this one that's in town that still needs to hit eighty percent of the people could be moved, that could still hit eighty percent, and the mill one could still do the same without, and again, we're not gonna appease everybody. I'm kind of just talking my way through this. Sorry, guys. So, uh, just knowing that it's, and it sounds like you guys are willing to work with us. It'd be nice when there's time not here that we can look at the map with you and work with you to try to look maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you see where I'm coming from.
Yes.
No, it is one point eight seven miles between Mill Road and Hagen.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Haugen.
Augen?
Haugen.
Augen.
I could be saying it wrong.
Don't ask him to speak.
It is about hitting that eighty percent, right?
Okay.
And I will say that the fire hall one is, um, that is, we did work closely with the city to come up with that location. We had another location, a couple other locations. And we ended up on that one. That is also the case, uh, for Rory's Road is that we, we did, that is the second or third location. And that's kind of why I'm painting the great picture of, of this, because we have been through this exercise.
I had heard, um, the movement from where it was asked at Papke's to where it is now. And then, um, if, if roads and whatever, you know, you guys are willing to put that in, I'm not saying this is gonna be better for everybody, but instead of putting the tower right here, right next to the fire hall, is it, would, would Title be, uh, willing to put it right in the teeny corner of the lot, of the, the borough lot? That puts it way further back. I'm not saying that helps with the quarter mile that I've been hearing before, but kind of tucks it away a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've been very forthcoming with my willingness to
Yep.
um, to look at alternatives.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry. Everyone needs this. Um, okay, yeah, no, that's, uh, those were my questions as of now. Thank you.
Member Newman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification. The assembly hasn't agreed to sell the property.
Nope.
We're just negotiating.
We, we, we've given the manager
Right.
direction to negotiate. He is in the process of doing that right now with Title. He will bring that, he will bring that back to us when he's finished.
Well, we, we approved the sale. We gave the manager the ability to negotiate the price.
No.
Nope. Give him the authority to negotiate for his possible sale. That's what, that's what was voted on on September. I know I was there.
I was there too, but.
It might be good to get some legal clarity on this.
Way I remember it, anyway.
I'm, I wanna go back. Steve is in the back of the room here. Do you want to, do you want to address it?
Sure. What, the assembly basically told me to negotiate a sales contract for that, for a property on the, at the fire hall there. And it's not, never been changed by the assembly. So you didn't designate which property, you didn't designate a price. You just said negotiate with Title and come up with a sales contract that the assembly could look at and approve or deny at a, at a future date.
And to negotiate the price.
And negotiate the price as well. Correct. Yeah.
I got another question. If everybody else is good. Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions before I, okay, member Valentine?
Okay, let's say in the fire hall one, it's a very odd looking piece of property, right? Let's say we tucked it right into the corner somewhere. Boom, in the corner there. Is the road that would be put in accessible to the community at large? Or would there be like a fence that says, uh?
Tell me.
I mean, it would be preferred to be able to use the, a new road that would head that way. Okay?
If I may.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry. Thanks. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. We don't want to get too much farther back on that lot because we're getting too close to the airport. So, you know, I, I don't know what the rules are there. There's pilots and folks in here who probably know better than I do. And we also don't want people, you know, the, the general public driving out there because then the airport folks will get upset. They, they already make our EMS people have to identify themselves like they're going into the Pentagon.
Right.
Just to get on the airport. So I, we, we have to be very careful about anything related to
People in the audience know it's James Valentine talking. It's good, you know? I'm just chatting away. Okay. Then the next thing too is that is a hundred and fifty feet tall, a set thing for you, uh, in the fire hall area?
It, it's not. I will say that's a short tower.
That's a short tower.
Yeah.
Just
And we've already come off the one eighty.
Okay, so one, the
Is it one twenty at that spot?
Okay, so it is not set in, like, the, yeah, okay, so, um, you're not set on one fifty. I'm just using that.
Yeah, we just, again, it comes down, my RF guy rules my world.
Right.
So, um, that's, that's
I understand why we'd want it taller, you know, for real estate sake, but just
And that means less towers overall too, right?
Correct. And it's just more, again, just kind of talking this through. Push it back, make it shorter, you know, kind of anyways, thank you.
Member Schwartz, I'll go here first.
Yeah, I'm not known for being quiet. I, uh, kind of in a pickle here. Thank you, Mr. Cropley, for coming. I'm not gonna go into the hundred plus year family history because I can't compete with my Klinkitida brothers and sisters that have been here thousands and thousands of years. We've got a clash of sovereignty here. You know, and I, um, I understand sovereignty rights a little bit. And I listen to Will carefully. I've got a lot of respect for him. I think the native peoples of this area have felt imposed upon before in the past. I can't imagine what that's like. The people that I've been listening to for three months feel that they're being imposed upon. And I listen to a lot of them because I grew up with them. Family, friends. There's a lot riding on this and I really appreciate your willingness to work with us. Because since the beginning of this thing, it's been plaguing me. How can we create a win-win? And just as a good friend and for everybody that's listening, I'm gonna address Will. I, in all that Klinkitida has done for our community, so many wonderful things, I've never heard one negative word. It's always been positive and praise and respect. And, and then this comes up and there's concerns and questions. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly. We've got some work to do, but just because it's dressed in overalls and looks like work, I don't think we should back away from it. I mean, this is maybe one of the most challenging things we do as an assembly, possibly the most challenging thing we do together as an assembly is try to solve this issue. And I gotta be really heartfelt here. I don't like, I saw the community divided a few years ago. I think you know what I'm talking about. I don't like it seeing it divided now. And, and respect for each other's, um, concerns and really legitimate concerns. Property, not so much that, it's there. The people are a little deeper than that. Maybe their view. But a lot of people are severely, intensely concerned about the safety of themselves, their children and their grandchildren. And I think those are legitimate concerns. And one of our jobs as a borough is to represent the people and all the people, and that's not always easy. But it's also to protect the people. And so got me in a bit of a pickle here, but I appreciate you coming, answering questions. And I'm hoping we can sit down together and work this thing out. And at the same time, uh, retain respect for one another and, and, uh, there's an awful lot in these notes I had. But I think I've said enough for now. Thank you.
Somebody else? Remember Newman had a question or? How about, uh, we have one member on the line, member Stanton Gregor. Do you have anything to add?
Hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Uh, no, thank you. Uh, I got
Uh, no, thank you. Uh, I got, I wrapped into work with clients this evening and when I was done, I was going to pop in and listen. The first hour I'll make sure to listen to later on. Uh, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions, number Newt.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a great opportunity. I, I really do, and thank you for coming. I think. Things might have gone a little different if we had this conversation last fall or wherever, and I think it's, I'm still trying to understand the whole concept of it. I mean, I think we hear like Rob and Bob both said that. It's a tough position here trying to figure out what's best for the community, and when people bring up health concerns or safety concerns. We take that seriously, or I certainly do. And so I'm encouraged that it sounds like title might be willing to work. As we negotiate, trying to figure out what's best for the entire community, not just. A commercial company that is trying to increase their business. So I'm looking forward to.
So I, I want to address that. I've, I've been. We're, we're not a commercial company. We are tribe. We are department of the tribe. We are not taking money from this enterprise and putting it towards. New Jeeps or anything else like that. It goes back in and that's why we can provide um such a high quality, low price. Solution. The um. I'm trying to be like the gray rock and be orange and. I'm not the gray rock. Um. So I'm gonna say a couple of things. One is, there's no world where I personally would put my name on anything. That had any chance of harming people. We're not selling sugary soda. Or ATVs or boats or airplanes. Or cigarettes or anything else like that. We're providing a service and an investment in infrastructure in a community. You talk about. It really resonates with me what, what you're saying. And I think that's the key divide here is that. We know, I know. That having better broadband improves. People's lives with education, healthcare. Economic development and so many other things, access to AI. Um, access uh to be able to zoom in to these meetings, be able to watch these meetings from the airplane. I don't believe that our communities will be here if we don't have significant improvement in broadband. It's a ten plus billion dollar problem in Alaska and we only have a billion dollars to solve it. How crazy is that? Only a billion dollars. And. We look at our future generations, they aren't gonna stick around if they don't have internet. I fundamentally disagree with the fact that folks think, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just really speaking from the heart here. That Petersburg is served. I have one bar of LTE in here. Okay, that's, that's four G. I believe that we need this infrastructure for safety, for fire, but you know, we, we did a program. We got a grant for our radios in the communities. And we spent a lot of time looking at the different radios and they only, they don't even work the two and a half miles. With broadband. We are able to FaceTime, we're able to descend our location, we're able to send uh and share information in real time. It's invaluable. And I, I think we're doing a real service to the community, and I know you guys don't all agree with me, and I respect that. And I think I've shown that tonight. But when you talk about what, doing what's best for your community, I truly believe, or I wouldn't have applied for the fifty million dollars. Or I wouldn't have, have, have looked at the map and spent the last three years finding locations where I can put these towers. And, and figuring out how to build these towers and follow all the rules. And let me tell you. You guys are internal rules, the federal rules, the local rules. Uh, the rules of the world of getting a contractor and. And um doing geotech and building a foundation and doing all these things. So I can sit here in front of you and look you in the eye. And tell you that it is safe. That it isn't gonna fall over, that it isn't gonna catch on fire, that we do have a plan to maintain it. We do have a plan to sustain it, and this entire community and all of southeast of Alaska will benefit because of it.
Thank you. Um, any, before I summarize, I've got some, I got some, let me finish, please, then I'll come back. Um, I've got some questions for you also. Um. What I heard you say earlier, you're willing to share with the assembly. The maps where you have adequate coverage and I'll particularly talk about the Pappy's area or that, that whole area that. You, we've, you said was underserved, we've all said was underserved in one way or another. So I heard you say that you're. You're not.
I will share, uh, I, I will absolutely share our heat maps. For the towers that we are building or looking at building, our projections of what those towers look like for our service.
Would that also include or allow us to work with you? In terms of finding an alternative location in those similar areas of some.
Yeah, I, I think it's, that's like a, a big piece of that, absolutely.
Okay, second question, and I heard you, I heard you talk tonight and the, the assembly has asked a number of questions, but. I heard you talk tonight about. You, you would like to be able to move forward or to have something, you know, tangible, in other words, something under construction or something within the next year. On, on all the sites of ours. Is that, did I hear that correctly? Or, and do you have to, under the grant? I guess, do you have to have that actually constructed or can, just committed or in contract?
Uh, yeah, that's a. I have to have it in uh, in contract, so I have to have. Uh, the, the money allocated.
The money allocated, so it has to be under contract, although it wasn't, the project actually probably may not be finished.
Yeah, I mean, if I had uh. If everything was signed. It gets a little tricky if the work is done or isn't, isn't done, but uh. It's hard to answer that. Uh, the, the um, working with the uh. The grant can be tricky. So again, I'm willing to uh.
Yeah, we're, we're well aware dealing with grants.
Yeah, right, uh, to look at the timelines that are available to us and work inside of that timeframe.
Okay.
And that may shift, and that may.
Okay, now, I, I want to go back to something that was said over here. Um, I do not want us to use, for instance, making a decision on. Like the tower by the fire hall to hold you hostage on negotiating with others. I disagree with something that was said earlier. Is it so, what I'm hearing you say, you're willing to work with us independently, you know, there are one versus another one?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, let's. I'm not willing to negotiate a compromise where I don't get anything back.
So that if we ask you to buy the Mill, Mill Road Tower, about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars?
It's, it's more than that. It's a very nice tower.
I understand, I'm, I'm not saying anything now. Some more questions I have for you. You said earlier to a comment that was made here that you are now placing some towers on rooftops. Is here in southeast, is that, am I hearing that correctly or was there, what's the?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, and so, and I know I'm not sure where the question was going that was asked, but. Um, is that a possibility or, or, and I don't have any ideas, so I'm.
It's not a great solution. Um, it doesn't create additional space. For multiple carriers. It works well in a very lucrative market. And that's why you see that down south, you'll see on parking garages and telephone poles and, and all that sort of thing.
If we were in negotiation with you at Pappy's, what would be your, what would be your sideboards for the borough? To negotiate?
Um, you know, the, the trick is the grant. And if we could, we would have to work closely with the granting agency. They're complicated to work with, but they're good, they're, they, they operate in good faith, so obviously disposing of that. Um, would be required. And um. And, and the timeline becomes a problem. Again, finding, show me a location that will work. Uh, I'll work till my eyes bleed to figure out all the rest.
I, I want to add one thing to that, is that we have, I think, what, two different applications in with DNR and we've not. We don't have very much, what do I want to say? Some of them have been in, in the mail for five years, some longer than that. So I, to be able to do that in one year, I have. I'm not gonna hold my breath on that, but I, I think it's worth looking at. I'm not sure I agree with the comment that was made earlier.
I mean, there would have to be hard paper.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, if we were able to do that, and I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, if you, if, there's a big if here. If we were able to do that. And you had, that, that transfer has to come back to the borough, I understand that. And, but then if we had an agreement with you. Would that, could, if we did it within a year and that would meet your timeline to be able to build something or have something under contract?
I hope so. I'm working for that.
I, I'm, I'm not.
Caught me in a bad time.
I know, I'm uh, I'm not holding my breath. Okay.
Which is actually a couple of months, knowing these guys.
Yeah, okay, well, how then, I was going to some other questions I had for you. How soon can you get a copy of the coverage area, let's say, to our manager?
I won't make any super tight commitments, but it, I, we should have that handy, so as long as we have it handy. You know, within the week, if we don't, give me, you know, the end of the month at the worst case, if I gotta redraw them, I can't imagine that's the case, but I don't like to. Freehand up here uh or overcommit.
Yep, and are you the only one that could do, sit down with us and do negotiation if we were to look at that as a possibility?
President Peterson.
I'm, okay, okay, thank you. With that. And let me see, there was one question I'm gonna, I'll go to, and then I gotta close it out, and I have summary.
I, I think, uh, I'll give you the industry standard that if, you know, like any. The same as any other um. Industry. Player. And that um, you know, take, take your pick of talcum powder or. Uh, what, what are some other ones? The seat belts or, or what have you? Um, is it typical remedies that would be there? It's. I, again, there's, I, I don't want to debate this, I'm giving, I'm answering your question, which is the same as. Any other industry under the same circumstances. There's no special um. Bar that is set for, for us or um. Just like if we found out that these LED lights were a problem. Again, this is, you know, look, this is a technology that's been around for a long time. There's billions of people. Um, surround, there's more RF in this room than our tower will give off. Um. So. The, the same as any other industry with, with any similar um. Problem like that. And it's honestly not something I'm worried about at all. Because RF is non-ionizing and the equipment we're using is off the shelf. It's used all over the world, uh, again, with billions of people. And there's been no, no shown uh side effects, and I don't want to. Turn this into a, a big try to change your mind or. A big back and forth. I'm just letting you know. How we see it.
Thank you. I'm going to, and I'm gonna summarize it and then we'll close it out. Is it. I think we got a number of things in motion. Uh, the planning, PNC is looking at. The, the ordinance is related to cell towers. But I'll tell you, even if we get those finished, the ones that are currently, it, the ones that are currently in progress or have. Been committed to are our grandfather, so. New regulations isn't gonna help that. If we were to go to another site, um, then yes, that would be a possibility. Um, I have to say though, outside of service area one, even if we have those regulations, then we have to go back. And look at, we have no planning and zoning regulations outside service area one in this borough. And so that's a whole different process. You heard it talked about today by one of the young ladies on the. Planning and zoning, and you're looking at least a year out, minimum, to do anything with that one. Well, we're gonna put it in process with the assembly here very quickly and uh, but it, we. The first step is we gotta get a set of ordinances to be able to follow through on that, and we're, they're already being worked on. With that, I'll proceed. Um, I, with the one on Mill Road. Um, I, I don't, I can put a, put it on the agenda for a decision. But I don't think we have a million dollars to buy that out. I just don't, unless you know a million dollars, I don't know. Um, I, I think we're willing to work with you on the other two. There was a couple of ideas come out tonight. That I think we need to talk to about related to the one at the fire hall. And the one up there is gonna take, and the one out of Pappy's is gonna take a little bit more time. But I think we can commit to you to do something if we're going to, if the coverage is there, if we can possibly do it. I think we'd be willing to work as quickly as we can possibly pull it off. And with that, I'll close it out tonight, and thank you, Mr. Cropley, for coming, and thank everybody for coming tonight and listening.